I'd like to call the meeting for order. You could please take a moment of silence, please? Please rise for the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in your visible liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Media Act, the public members of this meeting have consented to coordinate all district schools, the Herald News, the Department of Defense, the Records, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board of Terminates, Paper Vision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the administration room. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township lodgrines, and all district schools. Mrs. Francisco, roll over, please.
Mrs. Romeo, here. Mrs. Stevens, here. Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Swire.
Here.
Mr. Reno.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Orshinsky.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Good evening, Dr. Anamon, and welcome back to the table.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome where are you meeting? So, as you see our board members smiling since we were seated like this, I think we've ordered these new chairs probably a week before the pandemic started, and we're going to have some meeting because they couldn't fit in our end of desk. So now I think we're back normal, and our microphones, I believe, are ordered, and so pretty soon you'll see a home we set up here. So, thank you for the patience. Didn't make the agenda, but I wanted to add something to the superintendent's board. Congratulations to Class of 2021 student Justin Spagnola. He was recently named a Passaic County Unsump Hero. The Passaic County Department of Education recently named, I think, six or eight students in the whole county as Unsump Hero, and Justin is one of them. So congratulations, Justin. I'm guessing you're probably not watching, but somebody is. At least I don't know, I say congratulations. Back to the agenda. Our entire agenda for school and education, for education, and the second resolution, is that our state is determined to encourage an instruction and continue to implement a plan. With the board's application, when they get here and everybody watching at home, we will be going to applying for such a full SIR free funds. They're eligible for 2.3 million, over 2.3 million dollars in federal funding. As part of that grant, you have to, you have to post on our website and send to the Department of Education, this plan. A template came from the Department of Ed, every district in the state that wishes to get their SIR money has to complete this, have approved a board meeting, and then submit it to the state. Although the grant itself isn't doing it for the fall, we still have to work something out in terms of what we can spend on that or what we can't spend on that. It's not just the one check that gets money you send, and then they give you the reverse back again. But it is 2.3 million, so it is why this is not even a good idea tonight. What I'm trying to determine out of a small grant of $500, but it's not like they did it, but it's seven figures, so it gives them a piece of responsibility to get his return to school plan on our website and approve it tonight. There is a statement on there for the date, first day, second day, rather. I think it was June 17th, we included it, and the next that's a day combined. So as Governor Murphy, Department of Education, come out with new regulations this summer, or our fall instruction, this plan can be amended, but it's wanted to approve tonight with our SIR. And lastly, a word of thanks. As we're in fifteen, sixteen months, we're in, people might, people might get on, we've been taking time to thank the different stakeholders and groups in town in our, in our school community, students, parents, teachers, administrators, the whole family, everybody. One group that really does have, doesn't receive the, the thanks exactly that they do deserve, is our Board of Education. Those are faculty members, community members, who live in the many room, one of the greatest West Milfords, one of the West Milford schools, and I give that. I know that the time you put in, the hours and hours and hours that you put in to help the discommunity, and on behalf of our students, our parents, our staff, I want to say thank you. I think it's like my iceberg, and I always tell people, what you see is about 10%, amount of time that you put in is probably 10%. What you see below the surface is definitely 90%. Reading emails, reading policies, reading regulations, reading curriculum, looking at assessments, maybe that level of legislative votes, it's a lot, a lot, a lot. And, well, there are ways. Unfortunately, we've lost ears, so we have to, but I do want to thank you, because I have done this to happen. So, on behalf of grateful school community that I do, where education, however, your support goes ahead.
Can I go on, I have, any? I think, Dr. Anamon, I think we would also thank the community for supporting us as a board, because there were so many questions that we couldn't answer, and they were so patient with us, and I think we appreciate that also, so thank you.
I agree, and I want to thank each of you, because I know that we've spent a lot of time on the phone, in conversations, trying to do absolutely the best for West Milford kids. And I thank the administration for what they did, because they got our kids back in school. In West Milford, our children were back in school very quickly compared to other districts. There are some districts that still haven't went back into their home, and the fact that we were able to do full days and able to get through this year the way we did, it surely is to the credit of the administration, the staff, the parents, the teachers, everyone, because we truly did work together. And so I appreciate it, and I do want to thank the parents and the students for putting through a really popular, whether they say whatever doesn't kill you makes you stronger, so I think that we're going to have a very strong generation to come forward, so I thank them, and thank you all. And this is my back, are you ready?
All right. I just wanted to, I just wanted to highlight a little bit on our summer program, that I've mentioned a few times about some of the exciting things we have in our hearts. While everyone was celebrating my last day of school, I was involved with the staff members, administrators, who are not looking forward to summer break yet, who are ready to crank it up again and get working on our STEM camp, which will be housed at Camp for Kansas, which is back on the road. They moved their, the camp is actually called Hands in for Youth, just want to make sure I mention that, because I keep saying Camp for Kansas, it's actually Hands in for Youth, is the organization that we partner in. B-bells have been tremendous, or, you know, opening up the, opening up the grounds there and letting us, letting us do our thing. So, if you are, are on Twitter, you may have seen, took some pictures of our staff there on the, on the seventeenth and eighteenth last week, you know, the day after everyone was, you know, staying behind the school. Our staff was in there walking the grounds, planning activities, and really getting the, really getting the way of the land. Just wanted to say, you know, theme of thanks, a lot of people coming together, saying, you know, thank you obviously to the board for supporting, supporting the planning for this. Well, especially say thank you to Barbara, Barbara is the only one who gets all the thanks, being, you know, dollars behind everything. She's been great in helping make sure that we are providing the free meals for both, not only our students attending the STEM camp, who are leaving with lunch that day, but also students who are attending our summer literacy program, that will be coming in, receiving your breakfast, coming in, and then students who are beginning half day, will be going home with lunch, students that are staying for the full day will be getting a lunch break, and then continuing on to, you know, social, emotional learning and math. So I just want to make say thank you for, you know, being around that. Along with the STEM camp, which is really exciting, that begins next week, we're going to shine, so we're hoping for a shine. If there's a potential for downpour, thunder, lightning, and that sort of thing, we do have a Plan B. Plan B is not nearly as fun as Plan A, so we're really hoping for some great weather next week. Following that, we meet in on July 5th with our summer reading program. Summer reading program, a traditional program offered for many years, however, we have that program typically ended around 11:30, our students go home, and spend the rest of the day. With some additional grant money that we received previously prior to what Dr. Anamon was talking about, SIR application, in SIR II and CARES funds, we were able to extend our summer literacy day to offer a hour of downtime, lunch, lunch break, and then support from our physical education staff, usually project adventure, as the meetings for social emotional learning, it gives you the out, they can plan, they're going to, you know, kind of return to what they knew was normal, interacting, being involved in, in a team building, and getting to know each other, debriefing after activities and that sort of thing. Following that, we're going to do an hour of fun, hands-on, hands-on math. So, you know, so it's going to be a great, you know, couple, really a couple months of planning, and so we're excited to see these, you know, these things really, really starting to get going. Another thing I also want to point out is that, you know, now, typically, we'll always be looking for more hands-on activities, but this year more than, more than ever, especially with the STEM camp, adding the hands-on math hour, we're looking to get kids more back to the tables, back to the groups, back to the hands-on processes, you know, involved in science education and athletics, because for so long, you know, they've been, you know, reduced to, you know, the screen or the digital tools. So it's going to be a very, very hands-on summer for both of our areas, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I like to tweet it. I tweeted.
Okay, I've seen that.
And I think it's great. I hope everyone gets the chance to see this, this STEM camp, which we're very excited, and I think for all the board members, we're very excited that, and we're looking forward to meeting, and that we'll be able to continue doing in the future. And Mrs. Francisco, we have, we have the board minutes from the May 25 meeting, the regular minutes, and the executive session minutes to be considered on those boards. Do you need a motion? Oh, no. I'm sick. I'm sorry.
Workshop regular meeting, and the May 25 executive session.
I have a second, secretary. All of those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
C.
You are. Moving on to my report. First of all, I just want to say, congratulations to the class of 2021. Congratulations. I, I, I have to say, when you're a board member, there are certain times that take away, anytime you think to yourself, why am I doing this? Because when you see the kids at graduation, or scholarship night, we, we all realize why we do it, and the drive-in was wonderful. I want to thank the entire community, the parents, the students, the staff, the fire department, the police department, everyone that was out supporting the parade. If anybody happened to see it, it was just, it truly is a good sense of why West Milford is away, and I want to thank everyone for caring enough to take the time to be there, because when the kids were pulling into the drive-in, and they were talking, they kept saying, they were talking about the people on the sides of the road, and, so it really, really was a great night, and I'm glad that they, that people were out, and if it wasn't for the community, we wouldn't be able to do this. So I want to say thank you for the great show of community spirit for these young people. And second, I don't know if anybody's had a chance, but we have a new Highlander here. That is, that was given to the, the school district, that is, is on the corner by the parking lot, near the senior football. If you get a chance to see it, it was a very generous donation, and I do know that we have something planned in the future for a ceremony, but if you get a chance to see it, I know a lot of the seniors had their pictures taken there. So it's something to do, when you happen to see it online or something, and you're wondering where that came from, we had a very generous donation from someone that we will be talking about in the future, but so I'm just.
We didn't rush to get it up before graduation. We came a couple days early, and we poured the slab, and we kind of got it out soon, but we haven't had a chance to do it formally, and we just.
And I want to thank board for that, because I know that the whole, everybody had it really put together, passed it, and it is quite something to see, I was like, really, it's really neat, so. And that ends my report.
I think we also have to, because we're going to add the McArdan promotion.
Oh, ceremony, I apologize.
It was very well done. Mr. Citro and, and his staff did a very, very distinguished promotion, and it was lovely, and the kids were just happily happy. Either that or off getting shorter, but it was wonderful. Thank you to McArdan staff for putting so much effort in.
Thank you for going in for me, I really appreciate that. And it was great to be able to have a, I think we have a normal end this year, and hopefully going into September, we're going to see, we're going to see that, so. Public comment? This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolution on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair of course. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time for remaining other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register and provide, provide it, and to give their full names, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address, their address, provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous in respect of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to that. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible, not liable comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment?
Good evening. Good to see everyone again. My name is Justine Haley. I spoke last time. I just wanted to say thank you for meeting with us this morning. We had a really good meeting with Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, and Dr. McQuade. Much different dynamic than last meeting, and I want to thank you guys for being courteous, answering all of our questions, agreeing to write Governor Murphy on our behalf. I really appreciate that. I want to thank you for explaining all of the questions that we had thoroughly, answering us, giving us some good ideas and notes to take down. And it appears that you guys do have, would say, the best interest of the kids in mind, so I thank you for that, and we just look forward to working side by side with you for the return to school plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Hello, can you hear me? Here. Pull up your chair. I do that, really.
My name is Kimland Alpe. I live at 634 Lake Shore Drive, and this is one of my first board meetings I'm ever attending. It's not comfortable for me, but it's really, more uncomfortable is my kids wearing a mask in school, so. I first would like to start by saying that I'm thankful for West Milford, who were one of the districts that got our kids back to school full-time, kept our schools open, and finally gave the option to not wear a mask. We received notice of masks being optional basically right after Governor Murphy gave the announcement, so I thank you for that. I'm here tonight for choice. I am the ultimate decision-maker for my children. I do not consent to force medical equipment on my children. For the FDA, face masks are designated as experimental for emergency use with no long-term safety trials for child's daily use. We all know that kids are the least susceptible to COVID-19. They are not super spreaders. Kids are virtually zero percent risk of death or hospitalization from COVID-19. I am not in any way trying to take away others' choice to wear masks or whatever other protective gear they see fit. We all should have freedom of choice. When the district lifted the mask mandate, the majority of teachers, staff, and kids don't want to wear masks. That's big volumes, how people feel about the masks. It is important to point out, when the district did lift the mask mandate, COVID-19 numbers did not rise. I did read in your return plan that the students with health-related conditions will be accommodated after a thorough review of medical recommendations. Every child in the world should qualify for a medical exemption, because no one should be forced to cover their face, be deprived of pure oxygen, or the right to breathe freely. I also read in your return plan that students will have access to school counselors, social workers, and our school psychologists every day they are in school, that these providers will be prepared to service students and meet their individual needs due to COVID-19 experiences. The child study team and counseling department will be prepared to acknowledge the potential trauma that students have faced. One of my son's teachers told me to sneeze in his mask. One of my kid's teachers threatened the class, the points would be deducted if their mask was below their nose. My daughter sent me a photo of how red her face was after gym, wearing her mask. My son literally just ripped his mask off on the bus because it was so hot and he couldn't breathe freely. The kids have to go in the hallway to take a sip of water? Are these examples of COVID-19 experiences when kids should seek out mental health workers? It meant for township and therapy regional schools to make masks optional in their return plan, and so can West Milford. You were elected to represent the interests of the students and the parents. Making masks optional allows each family to choose what is best for their children. Please do the right thing and give us choice by putting masks optional on your return to the school plan. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? That doesn't go away, I guess. That's okay. I'm short, I'll, I'll walk down. Okay. Okay. I'm not that far away from her. Thank you.
I made that tighter. Thank you. My name is Henrietta Schaefer. I live at 22 Broadway. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Anamon, Dr. McQuade, and Mr. Novak for a very productive meeting this morning. I think we all acknowledge that our kids have really been through a lot this year, and we also acknowledge that our district has done a really good job of handling this pandemic, a better job than many, for sure. I want to thank everyone who has done their best for our kids, including the board. We are obviously here tonight because we have concerns about masking West Milford students in the fall. Dr. Anamon, today you gave us what we were looking for, an assurance that you will do everything you can to keep our children unmasked, and an affirmation that parental choice is important. The daily COVID statistics look very promising. We know that West Milford has always been an outlier when it comes to COVID cases, both in the state of New Jersey and certainly in Passaic County. A one-size-fits-all approach to masking based on conditions in the heavily suburbanized and urban school districts simply does not apply to West Milford. It is safe to unmask West Milford students now. We know that the social, emotional, and even the health risks to our students have been great. We can argue that the negative costs of masking versus the benefits have been too high of a price to pay, but the only way to go is forward. I stand behind the rights of parents to send their kids to school with or without masks, and I also call on our district parents to be responsible. Keeping children at home who have COVID symptoms will do the most to prevent transmission. Please take this seriously. Our children have a right to breathe freely. They have paid a large price for a pandemic that statistically has affected the elderly, the infirm, and those with pre-existing conditions, many of them lifestyle-related. Going forward, West Milford families should have the choice to remain unmasked, and I applaud the efforts of our district administrators to make this happen. I wish for the continued good health for our children, teachers, staff, and administrators. Here's to a masked free fall. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, everyone, I'm Alexandra Slonder, and I live at 112 Timber Lane in Newfoundland. I just wanted to thank the board for navigating turbulent waters of a difficult year from the perspective of a concerned resident. I support the other parents here, I support the children, and I was very pleased to hear a productive meeting this morning with Dr. Anamon. I also wanted to thank Dr. Anamon for really taking leadership on the day where this board, Dr. Anamon, decided to support choice on the basis of the governor's tweet. I was very proud that, I lived in West Milford, that would take leadership positions issue where other boards across the state and other superintendents would follow. So thank you for thinking of the kiss.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi there, Monica Church, 412 Chamber Road in Hewitt, UGL School, actually no longer, actually, sad, I'm not for him. I'm just going to preface this, that what I'm going to say tonight is not related to masks. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of a West Milford family who couldn't be here tonight, but the majority of students this fall, the risk of getting sick from COVID is low. Personally, in recent months, my family's priority in avoiding COVID has been more about the inconvenience of it, quarantining, shutting our lives down for two weeks, but rather than a fear of my kids getting sick. But for some families, the risk of their child becoming very low from COVID is high in real. We all know that at least, we all know at least one of these kids, because these are kids who are immunocompromised, had major surgery, have underlying conditions. Our communities in the last couple of years have rallied around these kids and families. While these kids were in the hospital for weeks, sometimes months at a time, we helped fundraisers, had yield trains, made banners, had welcome home parades, and said multiple prayers that their kids would come home healthy. These families, again, need our help from the community to make decisions about sending their kids to school this fall, especially if the indoor mask mandate is lifted. They'd like to know how many of the staff are vaccinated, or what percentage in each school are vaccinated for staff. Also, how many students in McPipin High School, her grade, are vaccinated, either numbers or percentages. Since the vaccine is not mandated, there's obviously no requirement in reporting. So we're asking if an anonymous survey, like ones we received last summer, can be sent out. Very simple and multiple choice. Either A, my child is vaccinated now, my student will be vaccinated September, or sure they're going to be vaccinated, and my student will not be vaccinated. And then, of course, adjust it to staff, the simple, you know, no names. Asking for this does not violate any HIPAA laws. Of course, parents have the option to ignore the survey if they wish. Not only does this data help families make these decisions for their child's education in the fall, but it can also help other households to have a loved one also high risk for COVID. And then lastly, this parts more from me. I spoke here last September in support for in-person education, and honestly, at the time, I didn't think it would last. I thought for sure that the winter months, we would be virtual, and somehow we made it through without closing every other week like other districts around us. It wasn't easy, and it wasn't perfect. I know we had hiccups with transportation, but just wanted to say thank you to the teachers in the buildings, the staff in the buildings, the studio staff lunches that were in there and kept those buildings open, a lot of times for personal sacrifice. I had the opportunity to volunteer at my son's school for picture day, and what really impressed me was how happy those kids were, even with masks on, you could tell, very happy, it was like pandemic, what pandemic? So when this is all said and done, I think they're going to come out a bit stronger than we are. So thank you for listening.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing that, I make a motion for a call.
Second.
Page 10, personnel student affairs, resolution number 16. Your friend first. First name, this, we will, I was excited earlier this morning, so we have a poll that Brian Young, all of that, the rest of the resolution is all that is. Page 15, personnel student affairs, number 33. There was a poll and replaced that with hand-carrying resolution number 33 of low. Page 16, there are four resolution number 35. All of the agenda and make some adjustments for the next one. Page 21, operations and finance, resolution number 14. There is a poll and replaced with hand-carrying number 14 in the green. And final line. Operations and finance, resolution number 22. Where it says, agent service or whatever treatment agreement will change the jersey, you can strike through the words and whatever treatment. So it should be approved at eight minutes service agreement with change.
Can you repeat that please?
Okay, operations and finance number 22. You're going to strike through the two words and whatever treatment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we almost had to hang, sorry.
So I move in motion to adopt the agenda.
I make motion to adopt the agenda presented with the changes modified.
Second.
Any discussion? Not on paper?
Aye.
Education, this is fire. Okay, I move to approve items 1 through 18 in education.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, number 12 on page six. I'm looking at the number of students going to PCTI. I'm looking at the tuition and wondering why, once again, we're being, we're paying them twice. Once, the tuition is $1,136,400. We pay that tuition. In addition to that, we are paying taxes to the county that supports PCTI. And I think somebody, or if you want me to get in touch with our prehold, with Perry Duffy, and really call him to pass, because this is absolutely unacceptable. I mean, they get unlimited funds and we're hanging our, by the strings of our whatever. So I really think that something has to be done about that. I'm tired of seeing it.
I think in the very least, we need to go on record with them that.
Yes. I mean, tuition plus county taxes? I have a problem.
I, I, we, you are, you're all complaining in the report on the legislature, maybe you can get the names or?
Yeah. I know Terry's up in Zara.
Especially since it's getting, it's getting astronomical.
I think we need to know too, that even though it's 100 students, it's not, we're not losing 100 students in this school year. This is all for grade level.
Nine through 12.
Okay, so I want to make sure.
Nine through 12. And it might be an estimate. We may not have that many students going. But we have to commit to a certain tuition, because when they build their budget, they have to have the revenue that they can support the budget with. So if, in fact, in the future, we don't have as many students going, this becomes a credit on the tuition bill in two years.
I think we need a better plan there on that.
To put it clear, $17,364 per student that we pay for PCTI, along with the taxes that we pay to the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, it's in addition.
I do believe that, I do believe what, I don't know that much about county, county head services and technical schools. Because they have their own set of rules. But I do believe that there's a limit on how much funding they do get from the county preholders. I think most of their money comes from.
One question, I don't know. So they get money from the county.
They get state aid.
They get money from us. They get their, so we lost two points, hang on, we lost two points, something like that, right? What did the, what did?
I think they got about five or six million.
They got five or six million. And I just.
So they get state aid. And they get vocational money, they get Perkins money, they get a lot of money that we don't.
I want our 100 students that are going there to be getting just as well as the 100 students, just as well as the 3,000 here in our district. But obviously, the equity is very different. The state sees it very differently, and the county clearly sees it very differently.
I, I would like to see those 100 students be credited to us, because we're paying for their tuition. I, I understand that tuition has to be paid, but I feel like we need to get that credit of having an extra number of students in our, on our rolls. Because in doing that, we would not be losing every year on state aid, because our enrollment is dropping. So, you know, I, I, I think that there is multiple reasons why people send their children there, and I, we are not, by no means criticizing the school. This really has to do with how they are putting, how they put the funding together for, for this school. And I feel like we should continue to write letters. We had a very productive meeting with Senator Conato that night. He didn't understand, and, but nothing comes of it. So, and maybe, you know, I, I think maybe we still have to be on record every year complaining about what we're losing, because each year, we're losing more and more money. And now, our enrollment is starting to turn the other way. So that's important. Anyone else?
I have a question. Are we allowed to say, if we write letters and talk with the preholders and the senators, are we allowed to say, does the senator support what we're talking about, does one does not? Is it serious?
Everything really needs to go through the board. I'd like to be right sometime, but it really needs to go through Linda and Alex. I would like to find out what kind of funding, how much of our county, which is, I think, one third. And if our taxes is more than the other two quarters are, you know, county and municipal, how much did that county, because the county cap usually are with the municipal? A number of years ago, we started raising some noise about that. We did ask some improvements of part of the future too, with succession movement. Didn't go too far, you know, as far as being able to do it, but, you know, street signs are put up, more paving, a lot of, you know, parks and so forth. So making noise can make a difference, you know? Everyone wants to see what the funding structure is and say, hey, look, you know, hey, this is already, you know, and.
I knew we put a really good party together last time. So, and, where are you, I don't know if you were on the board then, but that's, that's probably what we, you know, what do they say, the squeaky wheel gets good reason? I think we probably have to do this every year. And, you know, try to get our position.
I don't know what to say. We need to, squeak.
Yes, I, I think so.
I'm also wondering, and I need to go look into this, but I just, I don't know, I'm wondering, do other counties have a county that's me?
Same tuition rate?
Yes. Every county.
And, you know, I have to say, West Milford is very fortunate, because they still have a vocational program. Or in that sense, they have some of the shops available, or they've, they've done a lot with the curriculum, they've enhanced the curriculum. So in a lot of ways, they are competitive with some of the offerings that the tech does give. We have the culinary arts program that, you know, can meet against them any day. And because of our distance, we probably don't have as many kids going down there because of the amount of time it takes to get there. But you have some other kid, I, I know some school districts closer that have larger student populations are paying 11 million.
And that's what, that's really what I was wondering, is that if other districts in our county are paying the same, and the next question would be, what are the other counties paying for their technical schools?
Yeah, I mean.
What's different by county? Different counties, the same weight, different amounts.
But that would be something, we're going to write a letter to our county preholders, it would be nice to know if other counties are paying the same.
That's like, that's applesauce.
We have the programs.
Yes.
We can go to homeschooling.
Yes.
Go cut the avenue for a program.
Our students here used to go to.
We're going to have a halfway program, I'd say, and get that loan.
But you really can't compare county to county, because the offerings while similar could be different. And the, the number of students might be different, because if you have 25 students in a class, your per people class is going to be less, or, you know, you're only paying for a teacher. So there's a lot of variables that go into determining what the tuition is going to be.
Which is a definite requirement, I think. We may have natural deal, is what I was trying to say. So, no, but if you look at other technical, like, you might be paying less for more, is all I was just saying. But I understand, I don't want to pay tuition either and taxes, but if we were to compare around the city, that would have my question.
I, I think, and this is on my, my opinion on this one. It's not the tuition that we're paying, that is my problem. My problem is that they're not counting on our rolls. And totally, and that is, that is the biggest problem, because we are losing funding because of those 100 students needing, but yet, they're telling us we have to pay for them. So we're, it's almost, it's almost.
Wait, that actually brings up another great question.
That might really be a state war issue, I believe.
Well, I, I do know when we met with the senator, they did not know that that was happening. If that was a big, I always been that way. But I think we've got to continue, like, we have to reach out maybe to the education committee in the state. And say, look, we don't, we, we're not saying that we don't want our kids to go to this school, or that, we're not complaining about that. What we're complaining about, if you're telling me 100 kids are on my rolls and I have to pay tuition for those 100 students, then you should be giving state aid for each student equally, so that we can pay the funds.
Steve, reaching out to the commissioner, they, they still can't tell us how their funding figure is calculated, so.
Hey, that was an increase, and I think our district students, we pay to go to high district schools, or especially education students, we still count them on our roll. That is a very good argument. Why are we not allowed counties and, and we're allowed, you know?
That, that, that's where, and, and I appreciate, I think this conversation is really important, and it's important in public, because we are talking about it every chance we get, trying to figure out a way to fix some of this. And as we lose funding each year, this is really an important issue, especially for West Milford, because, you know, it seems that the northern part of the state is losing their funding. And we have to do something.
Enrollment, enrollment drops, funding drops.
And if it continues, your kids are going to be on a bus for an hour to be able to take a culinary program, or an order shop program, or a theater program. If this continues in years to come, hopefully, that never happens to us, and that we can write these letters and make a difference now. So thank you all for all of this. I love how you like that we all agree, you know, that this is important.
Any other discussion?
I'm curious about the other one.
So we have a, something called LRA, a dilemma, and we're agreeing between the school district, the police department, and we sent also show the county prosecutor's office. Who comment that every year. It used to go on the poll in September for the school year, so we got ours for the 20th of November, school year in January, June. So we're proving how the event is headed. But that essentially just says that we will share information with the police department, they will share information with us.
No, and West Milford has had this forever, that the governor's office needed mandatory for every school district last year. I'm sure.
We need more.
I signed, I signed this agreement.
I think, are you talking about the handle with care?
Yes.
Okay, so the handle with care is different than this.
Oh, well, gotcha, yes, okay.
The handle with care, you're right, it was, we started it in December, we were expected, I think, starting in January.
So you have, so your honor, and your, and your handle with care are two of a kind?
Yes.
Got it.
Any other discussion? Hold on. Mrs. Wyer.
Yes.
Mr. Greenough. Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Compton.
Yes.
Mrs. Orion.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
I'm keen to do after the presentation. Okay, personnel student affairs, Mrs. Stevenson.
I wrote this out. Ask me if it's incorrect. I make the motion to move number 1 through 32 to the replacement number 33 on hand-carrying number 1, plus number 34 through 52 and hand-carrying number 2, and then 53 through 57.
Second.
Very good.
Say it again.
One through what, 32? Two.
She clicked the shot.
I was joking.
No, this time I'm going to go down one to.
All of them.
I put it all together.
Done good, honey.
Thanks. I, I wrote it out.
In a way, I would have.
There is a second and discussion?
I, I do.
Oh, I have to.
Okay.
Okay. On number 44, I'm sorry, is it 44?
Okay, say. Oh, yeah, it is. No, it's 40, it's 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52. How much money are we actually saving by not giving these employee numbers?
This is contractual, this is people who are on leave this year, and they would not move up a step in the case of, you know, step 10, step 11.
Did they work through?
No. Or they didn't want to require a number of dates?
Oh, okay.
We require a number of dates, right?
So we see a violation of your contract.
It was an odd year with leaves for a lot of reasons, but the end result is there's seven, eight staff under the school who did not qualify for the state.
They just didn't come in.
No, they were on leave, like, they were on medical leave.
Okay, I get it.
Like maternity.
All right, I get it then. Thank you.
I do have a question on number 28, and I think that really goes to dinner. It has to do with the part, the reporter part, you're going to be committee? Okay, are the, are, is that the entire committee?
That's the group meeting this summer, yes. That's not the whole, that's not the whole committee. Usual committees between eight poll members depending on who's in particular, very un giving here. This was the small summer committee, just to, just to work on the order that we talked about.
I have a question. Is anybody else have a question? Um, is each school represented? Do the gentlemen at each school are represented?
On the, well, committee as a whole, yes.
Yes, okay.
And this small group, no.
Okay.
The large committee, yes.
Are they all forty-three this year?
The, um.
Summer committee?
Summer committee.
Any other discussion?
I'm gonna bring up the number forty-three. I brought it up in person, I'm gonna bring it up again, because I've been thinking about it. Um, I'm wondering, for the anti-bullying specialists in each of the schools, how many students are in Appleton and Westbrook? Like, roughly? Did you say? Yeah. It is your right.
About two hundred in Westbrook, maybe two twenty-five.
Two oh one.
So Wendy Rocker is roughly dealing with four hundred and twenty-five kids?
Four.
Mabel Road and Herod is one.
Three seventy for the equal.
Okay. How about MacIntyre?
MacIntyre's about seven of four.
Seven sixty-five. And the high school?
I think we are nine, fifty-nine, sixty, and two.
At what level, elementary, MacIntyre, and high school, would you say, and I think this works for all the board members who've been involved in any section with HIDs, how many, which school has the most HIDs, unsubstantiated, substantiated? And I mean, it's not just for you, everyone.
This year, very technical.
No, I know, but.
I would say MacIntyre and the high school.
MacIntyre. Just in general, like.
High school is the largest school.
Okay. I see.
I think that's numbers for, this year would be a little bit of a anomaly, but the last four or five years before that, particularly with hundreds, it would be most likely high school and MacIntyre. Elementary.
That sounds right.
Elementary scattered about six schools, so even if there's twenty, it's, well, how about six?
And these anti-bullying specialists who are at the elementary schools, are they all the social workers? Are these the social workers that are still between those two schools?
Yeah.
We have the C S, yeah, we have the C S T social workers, but if you remember, we moved one social worker, elementary from Chalbeating up to MacIntyre.
Are these three individuals, since you were telling me that at elementary, the HIDs aren't as high as they are at MacIntyre and high school, are they teaching our children what bullying is?
The, 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 um.
Social workers?
Going into the classroom?
We have some lessons.
They run groups, lessons. Again, this was an atypical year, but let's move, you know, revert back to two years ago. Yes, they go in, they then, depending on like certain issues that go up in the playground or whatever comes up.
That's what I'm asking.
What are you asking?
What I'm asking is, are the social workers going in and teaching our elementary children, this is bullying, when you're making fun of a child's ethnicity, gender, something that they cannot change, rather than just a kid thinking they're a kid at the playground? Are the children being taught the difference?
You mean like a regular lesson or their standard lesson plan? We're gonna do eighth grade level, I'm, I'm trying to.
Regarding kids, you're saying, in.
Regarding what bullying is.
So I think the definition that you're defining is actually the HIB definition, right? For what constitutes investigation. I would have to find out if they're doing it across the board, but what I can tell you is that the elementary level has things come up, and again, they're far and few between. They're educating them, those involved in that time, about it as like a learning lesson. But separate than that, I think, and that's, Mr. Novak can talk, can talk to you more about that, is about just all of like the character and stuff that we do proactively to try to prevent it from a proactive standpoint. But as far as like giving out the definition to kids, I don't, I don't think that that's happening, but we can find out.
Yeah. I think that if kids are taught, whether it's elementary kids, maybe the MacIntyre and high school kids need to learn, this is what HID bullying is. This is what it means. This is the thought, this is what it means. Maybe we wouldn't have as many HIDs at MacIntyre or the high school if the kids were actually being taught the difference of you're picking on somebody or being mean, or you're saying, I don't wanna be your friend anymore, whatever the situation is, versus what bullying actually is.
Maybe that is something that we should put on education.
I was just gonna say, why don't we put that on education?
Right. Right.
Let us be real back.
And I just, and I was asking about the numbers because, you know, you have three elementary social workers who are in charge of roughly four hundred, four hundred and fifty children each. Um, and I just, I think we need a social worker at every single elementary school. If we're gonna, you know, be worried about them, you know, learning this and being taught that, I think that would really be very helpful to have a social worker at every elementary school. Um, I also just really still don't like so many people being involved in the MacIntyre and the high school, um, and the bullying that's seen here. So it's just too many people, hands in the pot.
Yeah, we had her.
I'm sorry.
And when you're gone. I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to say that in response, that I think this discussion is beyond also just the motion that's on the table because what you're talking about is like the role of the social worker and the role you want. And we've talked as a board about the budgeting implications. I mean, I think everyone would agree, we could benefit from more social workers. But budget wise, it wasn't in our budget. But that being said, I did write the grant, you know, with Mr. Novak to, to put forward, I forget which estimate it is, I think it was two, because two, you were one, about the mental health, to have some, some extra support to start to run some new proactive groups and things like that, that then we can turncase. So then that might be a discussion in ed committee. We talk about what types of things do we wanna see and then build that into a, into a plan.
Yeah, I just don't want to put, you know, we're making a motion to make these three social workers and the bullying specialists of four hundred of kids, you know, that's why I asked for the numbers. I don't think any one of them should have more work to put, you know, lessons and make lessons in. I'm just saying, best practice is to educate the children. And I said this numerous times on, you know, what the HID law is. And I think that would make it happen a lot easier for when we're talking about HIDs.
Debbie?
Kate.
Um, food for thought, I know this is kind of coming a little awfully fast here, but at back to school night, maybe it would be nice, while we have all the parents there, that we spell out specifically what HID is about, what it's, what, what is, you know, the, the, like the general overview, so that parents are aware of if, if, when their son or daughter is involved in the case, whether it's the victim or the, or the bully, that they're aware of, just the, you know, they have, they have some sort of knowledge. So that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Kate? So far, as all these things I've heard of last year multiple times, so I know that exactly what Debbie just said was discussed, and it corrupted all the P T meetings at all the elementary schools. I don't know about anywhere else.
Okay.
Um, P T meetings, they get a lot less attendance than back to school night. Um, but also the presentation that I saw at P T meeting, I love to see on our website, you know? And I think that that would really be a good idea because if you don't find these meeting or you didn't remember what they said, or you didn't see them, you can go to our website and see the presentation that was there, you know? Um, and think that training the, kind of training, educating our students at all ages of what that means and how to treat people should be in every classroom, taught by everybody. But, um, yeah, I mean, it would be awesome to have the social worker in the classroom and that, and I'd love to be a part of that conversation.
I do wanna say that, that what Debbie just said about the, the back to school night, we have discussed. However, when the year that we were starting it. I hate to say the pandemic, but we didn't have a back to school.
But we're going into a year that, you know, hopefully will be normalized. So this is just being, you know, proactive.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a plan that should, again, we, you know, I, I'm just gonna go back there, but it should definitely land on the education committee.
They haven't asked me yet.
So, um.
Oh, wait, he hasn't announced yet.
So we have. We need to discuss this in the education.
So we have a, you wanna wait for education committee, that'd be fine. But first, I'll just say, I'm sure every part of the audience has probably heard the word, be here, be safe, be honest, be respectful, like, hold your hand, do your personal best. Um, that is the backbone of Project Adventure and our social emotional learning component. It's also our, you know, I, I didn't, you know, say more than, but we are a nationally recognized district of character for our core values that we teach in every classroom across the districts. So, so I guess my question is, are you, you just talking about a specific, here's a, here's a lesson that says, this is the difference between conflicts, you know, peer conflict, and this is.
This is so easy, it's like.
So, I mean, that's a simple adjustment.
Yeah, the character is amazing and wonderful. What I'm saying is, like, do our kids know, any kids, any school, did, here's a situation, so and so did so and so, is that bullying? I can guarantee you, the elementary kids would be like, yes, bullying, yes, bullying! But it might not be. It's just a kid being mean or a kid having a conflict. And I think our children need to know the difference between the two.
But I do believe that exists, I have to, I have to double check. But I do believe that exists, not for our social workers, that comes from our health teachers, from our, our phys ed teachers. And it might not necessarily be in every classroom K five. It could be a third through fifth grade lesson that, that one of those students have health instead of D E for the, for marking grades. So I can check into that, I'll have a credit committee. Um, but we do have a very, we do have a very detailed and robust and successful character education.
And, and you absolutely do, and it's a neat thing. But what I'm saying is, K through twelve, I think we're gonna have, and I'm gonna be, you know, blunt and say, we're gonna have more HIDs next year than we definitely had this past year, if not more than the previous year. It's kind of.
We're hoping, and I think so part of what we're talking about with the social emotional learning component of our grant is to, you know, already be aware of that and step in from, from the beginning and try and prevent it. You know, that's why I added it to the summer reading program. You know, we don't, we don't service, you know, all of our students over the summer, but the students who will get there, and we're not gonna take time over the summer to teach them about bullying, but we're gonna teach them how to, remind everyone how to be nice, how do we, how do we get together, how do we, how do we use mind words, and those, those types of things? How do we respect each other? Um, you know, so that's the work that we have to do as everyone comes back together again and, and, you know, we're not, you know, six feet away and those types of things. So, uh, so I think that's our, our proactive belief and approach. And I, I use the phrase doubling down on Project Adventure. You know, we have, we have a system in place. A lot of districts don't have the structure already in place. We have. It's just that we're a little refocusing and, and I have to give some, a lot of credit to Mr. Trenacosta and the physical qualifications staff. He, he was, I think, back in February, March, held a professional development meeting, looking forward to September, talking about those things. And as the world comes out of this, what are the things that we even wanna make sure we have in place? So, you know, we've been talking about it, we've been preparing for it, we've included it for, so we have additional resources and funds. Um, just so I can happy to, you know, at the next ed committee, I'd be happy to kind of lay it out and, and, you know, what we're, what we're doing. And I will look into where we're specifically having that conversation, really, between, you know, peer conflict and harassment in the usual.
Yeah, I think, I think the ed committee can, we can get a little broader than we are here. Ray?
Two things. One is the presentation. You know, I've, I think I've been saying for a year and a half, we need to use video better than we use video. The parents of students can see three to five minute clips. Students can watch three to five minute clips online on this exact subject. Um, right, you don't need to make a forty-five minute video because nobody's gonna watch it. But if you make that three to five minute clip, I said we should have done that from the start of the pandemic. I encourage that like I've seen other school districts do. Like, we just need to do a better job of that. So I agree with Kate. Number two, only because I'm a teaching environment like you are, so I wanna ask this question. You said that the one social worker for all elementary schools is too, is not enough, right? And you should have one per school, not one per two schools, because having four students is too much.
Right.
But then you said there's too many hands in the pot in the high school, and it's basically one per two hundred students.
Right.
So, I don't understand because those things conflict.
Yeah. So I feel like.
That's why I said, I'm not a teacher, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's why I was asking, like, what's happening at elementary versus where is the most? It makes, it makes sense to have more investigators at high school level. I just wanna be sure that, that the kids that are substantiated are truly, you know, are substantiated, and the kids that are unsubstantiated are unsubstantiated.
I, I think what has to happen is when we go to, for education, and actually, we can, we can actually do this in personnel also. You could talk about how many hits you have. And like compare them so that you can see, so that we can physically see the numbers of the hits, say, over the last three years. Not kind of last year, because last year was like, you know, the holidays.
Yeah, I'll get that to the board.
And then that would probably give you the answer to what you're, you're looking for. Kate?
I feel like everything you said near, what I said last year at this meeting, and I know when I asked the board last year to boot this down, and there was an issue because we need to get it into the county at a certain time with all of these things. Um, and I'll let you know that I will be taking, you know, the best of hand this year because I do think that it is unacceptable to have that many investigators at the high school because then none of them get the practice of really, really go at it. Um, and I don't think it's fair, and I guess this is what, you know, I said last year and what my dear Courtney said tonight, and I think many of you agree, that having a social worker between two schools, when a hit happens on a Tuesday because they're not there until Thursday, um, you know, and then they're taking time from their other school. And so ideally, I would like to see one full-time employee in each building as a HIB specialist. And I've said that for three years, I will continue to say that as long as I say it. Um, the last thing that I wanted to say was just that, um, the words I think that were missing before, um, was, or I think what you were trying to ask is like, are we teaching the kids what the distinguishing characteristics are that make the case? Uh, and I know, I know that, you know, I thought.
I think that's a broader discussion and.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to say, those are the two words that we were missing so far is, what are the distinguishing characters? Are we teaching them that?
Is, is there anything else, anyone else on this?
Linda, I just have to clarify something because for the purpose of the motion that's on the table, I just wanna make sure that when everyone's, and it's fine whatever you decide to vote, but I just wanna make sure everybody has the right information. The, the roles, and this is at the elementary level, those three top social workers, Wendy, Caitlin, and Erin, if one building gets, um, has, let's say, two investigations going on, the other social workers pitch in. So they, they do help each other out so that it's not pulling away from other needs. And then the only thing I will say, because the child study teen social worker is David Bogstein as well as Dr. Capello, is that if it was only them doing it, then we would have to look at their other job that they're doing because they couldn't assume the role and then still do their other job. And you know how we're trying to get creative in our personnel, and that's why they're, you know, trying to do it.
So. Okay. Any other discussion on the motions? There goes the next. Um, if not, Roval?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Orion?
Yes.
Mr. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. O'Kinskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Uh, Zina, nine, no on forty-three, yes on the rest.
Said no on nine?
No, of Zina, nine. No on forty-three.
Okay. Mrs. Wyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operation and final. Mr. O'Kinskey?
Okay. Mrs. Stevenson, I'm gonna try and get a little on it, and then one here.
Now I hope it runs out.
Okay. Commotion, um, to approve items one through fifteen. The motion, um, to approve items one through fifty-one, with, uh, the unit carry replacing number fourteen and the change that Dr. Anamon noted on number twenty-six.
Second. Very good. Any discussion on the motions on the fifty-one?
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Number fifteen.
Okay.
Um, Murray, Murray, for the, um, outside fence perimeter at transportation, it legit costs a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to pave that hill?
Because they have to take all the, they have to mill all of the pavement that's there, they have to recycle it, discard it, um, and it's gotta be tested by them, because they have to make sure that it's not murmur mentally affected, and then they have to repave it.
And it's not just the front, it's also on the side.
But did we pave inside last year?
Everything is done inside a couple of years to see what the, to patrol and our product.
Took a big stretch, you can see some of the work being done.
Yeah, we started to mill it today, um, to, to start the perimeter work, so we have a lot of it done, but it, it's, and, and they, they do one coat, and then they have to do a top coat, so it's not just fill the actual end and go over it with a roller, and they have to put it to the bottom coat, and then they do a finish coat afterwards. Yes, it is expensive, and this is a price from the fall before, you know, everything went crazy.
So, yes, that's.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is something that we decided to hold off on a couple of years ago, we didn't have the gym floor, so this really.
We pushed it out. The hot holes were pretty hot, hold, yeah. Maybe they were about to start swarming.
Any other discussion? If not, Roval? Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Gerino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Feyer?
Yes.
Mr. Romeo?
C nine forty-six, yes, every now.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are, you have the next one.
Yeah, uh, the, the motion to approve item number fifty-two.
Second. Discussion? Roval? Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Gerino? Mrs. Feyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
C.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
C.
I would like to make the motion to move items number fifty-three through fifty-six.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gerino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Feyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I'd like to make the motion to move the work going through twenty-one under policy.
Second. Discussion? Do you have any discussion? If not, Roval? Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerino?
Yes.
Mrs. Feyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, committee reports. Uh, Parks and Recreation? Andy?
No.
Uh, safety, there is no report, that there are no meetings right now. Uh, Superintendent Hatfield?
I have something from the May twenty-seventh meeting, um, there was a question about back to school night, and yes, back to school night will be in person, and Dr. Anamon announced that McApin will have their night on September eighth, the head school will be September ninth, Actua will be the thirteenth, PK will be the fourteenth, Westbrook the fifteenth, Marshall Hill the twentieth, Maple Road the twenty-second, and Upper Green Relate the twenty-third. There was a question about permanent subs, um, in the buildings, it will not be permanent subs in the building in September. Um, field updated and improvements, um, it was announced that there has been new play delivered to Pill Galen, Munson, and Howard, it will be spread after the current season is over, there have been other improvements, a broken window has been replaced, siding fixed, had a fence repaired, as well as a scoreboard discussed, was the drainage at Pill Galen, and how it has been worked on and repaired numerous times, certain times of the year require the field to be drained, and others require aeration, so the district is looking to find a happy medium. And then there was a question about Assembly Pill forty-four, fifty-four, um, and the parents want to know if they will be made aware of the curriculum that their children will be taught, and Dr. Anamon announced that the implementation of this bill, um, is delayed until September twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Roback discussed the change in standards compared to what is currently taught, taught, and will forward the highlighted changes to the group. The district will share curriculum updates as implementation approaches, there is not a curric, there is not a curriculum put out by the Department of Education as of this date, there are a couple of splinter groups that have curriculums, but they're not the Department of Education. Uh, kindergarten registration is up, and there's, um, yeah, there are about nineteen students district-wide that will return to West Milker Public Schools for first grade starting in September, they're out of the district, they're coming back. Um, the website, the plan is to have a new website by September, let's hope so, that's it. So, uh, and of course, Dr., uh, Mr. Roback already discussed the summer programs, and that was it, that's my report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, Mrs. Dizian, I'll be right back.
Um, I heard you say kindergarten registration is up, but is kindergarten registration so far?
So, kindergarten registration now for September is two over two in the act, so twenty-seven four, Actua is twenty-five, May, Maple Road twenty-six, Marshall is forty-eight, PK twenty-seven, UTL thirty-two, and Westbrook forty-four, uh, for a two over two.
That's great, you just decided, kindergarten last year was about a hundred and sixty.
Hundred.
Right, to start here, to start here, right, it was a hundred and sixty, and at the end of the year.
This is the first time, a couple of years ago.
That's crazy.
They bottomed out, and now it's coming back.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're gonna see, our, our district is gonna start to grow again from the bottom up, and, and what we're seeing, of course, in conversation is that the new homes, you know, home sales are happening, and people are moving in, so we're, you know, I'm sure that, that number for kindergarten may go up over the summer because of move-ins and different things like that.
I was saying, I noticed that we picked up a lot of students K through five.
Yes.
You see, if you see September to the end of the year, picked up students in, like, every grade, typically what happens, right, families move, because they want to get their children established.
They lost, she did it just two years out there in Chris Key School, they got a full curve.
Oh, I bet you do. Okay?
Um, Kate, your report, you said something about permanent subs in the building?
Yeah, okay.
I could do that.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
I didn't know, like, what that's about, because there might be permits of the building if someone comes.
There's a need.
No, 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 it was an extra sub, so the principal's had more extra sub per building this year.
Okay.
Because it was last week called out, somebody's child got sick, they had to stay home, so made sure they had covered everywhere, we had an extra sub per building, um, the students in the Marshall or B, we had a, it was, uh, well, coronavirus combination that wasn't really.
That'd be sense.
Which was very nice. The parent, I mean, it was very nice in the building, but it's intense. All right, um, New Jersey School, uh, State County School Board, let's go to that. Oh, we won't, we won't be dealing with this till September, so never worry.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, New Jersey School Board, um, nothing at this time, I think, I'm, probably, from office, we'll have some information about the, um, what, yeah, the, um, how do we do it?
It's a key to plan.
Oh, sorry, please, I had, I'm having a C, C on there. Forgive me, uh, but, yeah, but that'll go on, okay.
So, we got, we got the dates already, we just have to, uh, get some work finished, and we'll probably put it on the same date out there, maybe, but we'll get some officially by the office.
Uh, legislative?
I have no report.
Technology?
No, of course. Well, I did.
Township and Board Joint Committee.
Friday morning, nine a.m.
I, I have to say that I, I, this, this has been a, a very rewarding year with the Board and the town, we have been working very closely together, we have developed a very good relationship, something that I don't always see in our community in the last few years, and I, I, I'm just so very thankful to, to the mayor and council for, um, your open door to us, and we, we feel the same, we're very reciprocal, we do things for them, they do things for us, and, you know, and I think everybody knows the firework we on the field and behind the high school this year, and, you know, there, there's different things that, that we work together on, so I'm, I'm very thankful for that, Kate. Uh, West Milker Municipal Alliance?
Um, because our committee meetings that moved to Monday night, I was unable to attend, so, um, I know that they're still working on the, uh, uh, National Night Out, August the third, will be at, uh, Winter Springs, and, uh, there's a, uh, there's a couple committees working on that right now, so, um, that's, that's, I mean, that's, other than that, I don't know anything else.
I'm excited about that, because we've never had that here in West Milker than like that National Night Out, I know the communities have done it, but I don't think it ever really happened.
The police department, uh, is involved, um, uh, West Milker Municipal Alliance is involved, the Highland Field Success Center is involved, uh, Parks and Rec is involved, um, what I can, what I know right now is we have the sheriff's department coming, we have, um, the mayor should be there, um, um, the, the. I'm saying buyer trucks, you're saying food trucks, a little different, um, uh, they're gonna be doing, uh, like, search and rescue, and, and different activities to bring the, the community out, so it's gonna be lots, it's, it's gonna be very exciting.
What was the date again?
August third, rain or shine, ready for.
And what is it gonna be, bubbling springs?
Bubbling springs, I, I, I'm being recorded, so I'm afraid to say the time, just, I'm not sure, but we say it's six-thirty-ish.
I think we'll probably, we'll have more.
Oh, yeah.
For July, for July.
I'm just doing it from memory from the, from working at the miles.
Thank you so much. Um, whole business? Nice, okay. Carrie?
Okay, um, at, at our last meeting, we had, um, Mrs. West come out, and, or maybe it was the meeting before, and I questioned the correlation between what I, what I call mini scores in the English department, and how effective they are in preparing our kids for the SAT, and she was willing to provide some feedback, and I was wondering if that's happened yet, Mr. Roback?
Uh, I, I've not discussed, uh, that feedback with her yet.
Okay, I would like to, no, we talked about it in public, too, Mrs. West was here. No? She was. What's she got?
I don't know, I remember.
Yeah, she was here.
It looks like two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, it was when they did the SAT presentation.
That was at the meeting.
They did an SAT presentation in.
The SAT presentation was Canadian.
Oh.
The specific question you have.
Oh, I, I, I want, I, I'd like to see that correlation, because, again, I'm still
not happy with the fact that our scores are down in line regards, and I, I believe there's a correlation, and I'd like, I'd like to know if I'm wrong. Um, and math hasn't looked too good either, but.
I have a closing call. Any other whole business?
Seeing none, I'd like to close whole business.
Second.
Hello, in favor?
Aye.
Any hope? Any new business?
Kate? I just wanted to say that, um, this week, I was in a meeting to see West Milker days open, and seeing our students out, enjoying summer, and our summer programs, when I know many, many school around us are still in school, because they didn't have virtual studios. So, um, thank you for having virtual studios, and thank you for the summer preparations for the students that need more help, and, um, I just think that any year, students want to get out before it's ninety degrees and sitting in a classroom, but probably this year more than, um, and so this week, I was just really thankful for those virtual studios.
So, that's our.
And, 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 and. I know, I mean, they're all.
Oh, I know, I know.
Everybody else is still at work.
Obviously, I need to go to class.
These are children, yes, that are hot classes, but ours are not, and that feels good.
Well, I think, I, unfortunately, the governor said we weren't having virtual studies that year, right?
Oh, wouldn't. But either way, we did it this year, and a lot of people didn't.
And I'm glad we did, because we did take some pushback on it, and here's our effect, but I think now that they have an extra, like, almost two weeks, summer, and I, I'm, I'm thrilled because I, I don't think they're up for it.
Uh, any other new business?
So, um, Mrs. Henick, you brought up how wonderful the parade was and the community coming out to support our seniors, and I talked to a lot of community members who felt the same way, that it was such a wonderful thing to do for our seniors, and a lot of comments are, we should do this every year, not necessarily the drive-in every year, but just some kind of parade for our seniors, I think would be incredible for our town to do, um, to show our, our hometown pride, I think it really brings the community together, um, everybody loves it, so I just thought, if there's a way that we could maybe do this for our seniors every year, maybe do the parade, really put it in the paper, and get our community up high, cheering them on, I think it would really be an awesome day.
I, I agree, but I think that's something that the high school would have to try to figure out how to incorporate it into.
I just wanted to bring it up from what I was hearing.
It was, it was, it was, it was a good point.
Any other new business?
If not, I make my closing call.
Second. Hold on, those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'll be coming.
This first time the meeting is open to members of the public having a reduced interest in the actions of the Board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milker Public School District. Member, members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first, each speaker will be given five minutes for a period, for a period of thirty minutes, and then, as permitted, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided, and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, all comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming, if and then appropriate. The report asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals in speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged, and the Board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded.
Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for comments. Anyone who wishes to speak on the public comment?
Can Linda? I do have a question. If masks are not made optional, and parents are not allowing their children to wear a mask, how are they going to be accommodated? There's no virtual option per Governor Murphy, so I'm just wondering how you're gonna accommodate those students? Sure. Um, if masks are not made optional in September, um, how are the students whose parents are not allowing their children to be masked, how are they gonna be educated?
We don't really do, give a question.
Okay.
I'll take your question.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks so much.
I, I, I mean, I think September is September. We're, we're, I think that at this point, we have to close the school drought, and hopefully, it will be, you know, addressed.
Any other comments?
So, you want me to make a motion to quote a comment?
Second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Uh, I need a motion for executive session?
At eight-thirty-one? I make a motion to move executive session for purposes discussing personnel appointments, designations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, tips, matters of third-time privilege, privilege, the executive session is not to be released until such time as a privilege or confidentiality is no longer personal.
We will be returned for action.
Second. Let, let, let's give a ten.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Barbara, could you do the roll call, please? Well, Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Feyer?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Feyer? Okay, I'd like to move, um, move to approve the recommendations of the superintendent in the following hits. Two thousand twenty-one, age one, unsubstantiated. Two thousand twenty-one, E one, unsubstantiated. Two thousand twenty-one, M two, substantiated. And two thousand twenty-one, M three, substantiated. Second? Any discussion? If not, roll call, please? Mrs. Feyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Torino? Mr. Oshinsky?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, good night.
Good night.
Have a good month of July, till the end.
And to you.
And to love.